Hold on just a moment. Sorry about that.
Paul, when you make that.
It was just practice.
Oh, yeah, full start. Waiting on Shar.
You busy at your regular job?
Yeah, it's starting to slow down. We got all of our bridge inspections done. We just have to make some paperwork corrections. And then, I really, I'm not going out and pounding signs anymore.
Yeah.
Unless the stop sign gets run over, then I'll go replace it. Other than that, no, I'm just kind of winding down.
Things are good. Just before deer season, we got caught up.
Oh.
But it's now or maybe a dozen cars are sitting outside waiting to come in, you know. It's okay, we'll make them last night, you know.
Yeah.
Feel the pressure.
Yeah.
It's helped me out. I didn't have any committees between our last two meetings.
I didn't either. As well as we had the public safety, but we don't report on that anyways.
Yeah.
It's more of a general discussion.
What happened?
She'll be right in. Because I wasn't down at AMC, I didn't get. So we lost next year. Cool. I mean, I, today, I got too much stuff going on today. We don't. Oh, okay.
Okay, now let Stanford pledge the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Hubbard County Board meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda is agenda approval. I think we're gonna switch two things around. Put the county employee recognition before the youth emergency shelters and support. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right.
I'll make a motion to accept the amended agenda.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And David, your vote? David, I'll ask your vote independently. It's time since you're online.
Okay.
All right. David's vote was aye. All right, on to, oop, to public input. Any public input? There being none, move on to consent agenda. Any item to pull or discuss?
I'll move to approve.
All second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Well, in comes the employee recognition. I got quite a few awards to hand out, but I got a few to read first. Environmental Services Edward Shroom, GIS Specialist, began full-time position on December 4th of this year. Robin Johnston. Oh, he's here, okay. Glad to meet you. Robin Johnston, dispatcher, jailer, is recognized for 10 years of service on December 6th of 2023. Jeff Stacy, Deputy Sheriff, is recognized for service from October 6th, 2005, to December 12th, 2023. Darcy Cagnon, Deputy Service began full-time, or part-time position on December 5th, 2023. Andrianna Roth, Dispatcher, Jailer, began part-time position on December 12th. And then we have some awards to give out. We'll start with five-year ones. I'll just read your name off, and then if you come up and get your certificate. Jeff Adelson. Joel Baker. Richard Boyd. Mark Cagnon. These are all five-year awards. Paul Garcia. Christina Holson. Joshua Holtie, he's here. All right. Corey Dorige. Stacy Lee. Sammy Light. Thomas Manners. Kimberly, uh, I can't. Brendan Page. Spencer Stack. Scott Williams. Okay, these are 10 years. Robin Anderson. Ryan Howson. 10 years already? Rebecca Hudrich. Robin Johnston. Glenn Norris. Nathan Stein. Andrew Wheeler. Alden Yonan. Okay, now we have 15 years. Michael Barr. Wayne Corfee. Ryan Miller. Dee Pearson. William Slott. Dean Fittfar. Yeah, we switched into 15 years here. Wait, we're on 15 years. Dean Fittfar. Beth Rendenberg. Now we have a couple 20 years. Joseph Henry. Gerald Hensel. 25 years. Sarah Brown. Troy Christensen. And Tracy Nuskell. Now we have the big one. 30 years. George Gregory Hensel. He's here. Thank you very much. That's it. Okay. Now we can move on to Youth Emergency Shelter and Support.
Hello. If you can go down to the first slide.
Could you give your name?
Yep. My name is Cory Nelson, and I am the founder and executive director of Youth Emergency Shelter and Support. I'm gonna reference this as "yes" because spitting that out is quite lengthy. So, I have worked in domestic violence, sexual violence, and mental health with, in area schools, from ages kindergarten up to seniors in high school. I have an associate's degree, associates and bachelor's degree in criminal justice, human services, and I just recently finished my master's in public administration from Purdue Global University. While finishing my master's, I was working in sexual violence, where I wanted to stay for the rest of my life. One toxic director, I left the organization very quickly. I had to think, what am I gonna do with my life? $90,000 in debt, I had to figure something out. So, I just started talking to social services in Mahubi about what Hubbard County needs. What does Hubbard County need? And they kept saying, some safe place for youth to stay that's in an emergency need. So that is how "yes" came to be. The real, it was just a reoccurring topic. Every time I would ask, they would always say, this youth shelter, youth shelter, youth shelter. Community center came up a couple times, a drop-in center came up a couple times, but then they really, we really nailed down that the youth shelter was the biggest need. A little over a year ago, "yes" became a thought. I went to the once resource in town in Hubbard County that is supposed to help entrepreneurs. I was told to change my idea because Hubbard County doesn't want other counties' problems. I took that and used it as motivation to continue, and that's how "yes" has gotten where it is today. I have established a board of directors. There are community members present here today who are in support and helping make this become a reality. I've attended and completed an ILT Entrepreneur Academy and created a micro-business plan. Joined the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits and completed an Advanced Trainer Institute from the Office of Victims Crime Training Unit. Just a little after a month filing Tax exempt status with the IRS, we got it back in a month, when it was supposed to take six to nine months as the average wait time. So fast forward as to why we are here today. I'm about to give you a lot of information and food for thought in a very short amount of time. So, our mission is to help Hubbard County, help youth in Hubbard County communities by providing a safe and supportive environment who are in crisis or in need of emergency shelter. Our vision is really focusing on those youth that are at risk for homelessness, are runaways, are in transition in and out of foster care, and they don't have a place to go that is safe. We have our values, which are security, so we believe that youth deserve a safe and secure housing option in a time of need. Inclusion, that serving any youth who can benefit from our services without consideration of their membership and any protected class. Inspiration, by partnering with community, staff, volunteers, we can celebrate milestones and inspire youth to thrive and survive. Adaptability, we believe as the world changes, so do the needs of our youth. We meet the youth where they are at and adapt to their changing needs. Quality, we pledge to continuously improve the quality of our services to fulfill the obligation as a community resource. Next slide. Is there a need? So, I like, we talk about there's no emergency shelters in Hubbard County. You have the Ark in Akeley, which is often full, and is domestic violence-related. So it's hard to just be specifically homeless and get into that shelter. The door in La Porte is very small and always full, and to get in there in non-emergency is very difficult. There are no shelters for homeless youth in Hubbard County. Looking at the big picture, there's an estimated 550,000 homeless youth in the United States on any given night. In Minnesota, there's an estimated 6,000 homeless youth on any given night. And Mahubi's community assessment shows that Hubbard County has a 14% homeless youth population. In 2019, the student survey showed that northwestern Minnesota, which includes Hubbard County, had the highest rate of students identifying as trading sexual activity for a safe place to stay or meet one of their basic needs. In 2022, the survey question was not asked to Hubbard County youth, but in Minnesota, as an estimated 4,600 students answered yes to this question. Due to the lack of affordable income-based housing, substance use disorders on the rise, violence in the home, lack of external family supports, and complex government system-based programs, youth easily become lost in the mix. When a crisis occurs, there are minimal responses, resources available. The likelihood of a youth requesting help is rare. Most services require parents' permission. Social services caseloads are high. Schools' social workers are overwhelmed. School mental health resources are minimal, so where do our youth go? They go outside of Hubbard County. They go to Bemidji, St. Cloud, Duluth, or the metro, if foster or familiar supports are not available. Juvenile detention centers are often used as holding tanks until other options are open. We know Hubbard County numbers aren't accurate because students in the schools are not surveyed on homelessness. In a later slide, we'll discuss why this inaccuracy may occur. Next slide. So what will "yes" provide? "Yes" will be a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week open shelter. It'll provide immediate shelter for the youth, emergency food, clothing, and supportive resources. They'll learn basic life skills. I'm not sure if you guys know, but a lot of youth these days don't know how to do laundry, don't know how to do dishes, don't know how to cook the basic meals such as mac and cheese and ramen noodles. So that, it'd be some of those, they'd be learning cooking, cleaning, you know, just how to keep themselves up, keep themselves hygiene, presentable, ready. And they would get referrals to community resources. So, we know that youth are going outside of Hubbard County for emergency resources right now. Why can't, we should be able to keep our youth in our community so they can still attend their schools that they're going to, so they don't have those changes, so parents don't have to drive to Bemidji or figure out a way to get to Bemidji. I've actually had people say, well, Bemidji's not that far. Bemidji is far for somebody that doesn't have transportation, when there's no public transportation to get there. If they have so many visits to complete with their child before the child can transition home, but that parent can't get there, it makes it really difficult for that transition back home to start. Next slide. Now I'm sure you guys are most interested in sustainability. After discussing with Hubbard County Social Services, they're confident they can keep the shelter full. This can be sustained through county, state, and federal funding. There are many grants out there for homeless youth shelters. Not only providing emergency shelter, but ensuring prevention and strategies are put in place to the best of our ability and lining with the system-based programs and natural supports are put into play. It truly does take a village to support nonprofits, and Hubbard County community members have been interested in helping our organization. Donating and fundraising will be another critical resource of sustainability for the organization. Maintaining and developing the board of directors will be critical in ensuring the succession and sustainability. Strategic planning will occur next month with the board as we work with the United Way of Bemidji area. Homelessness will not go away. Homeless children and youth are more likely to become homeless adults. Prevention, education, early services for youth can help prevent the long-term homelessness into adulthood. Let's change our future for the youth who need a safe place to eat, learn, and grow, and learn the skills that they need to succeed. Next slide. Community support. I have been going nonstop. I was just at the La Porte School Board last night. Pretty much every day of the week, I'm somewhere talking to somebody about this. So, we've had conversations with schools, community groups, churches, and organizations. I've only encountered one person that has significantly disagreed with this so far, and it's only because they don't see the need for this in Hubbard County. We must open our hearts and open our minds and become educated about the needs of our community. Until that happens, we cannot see the biggest picture, which is that we have a lot more homeless youth, and which we'll get into here in a minute. Next slide. I know it's hard to read on the slide, but I think on your presentations, you should be able to read the questions. We started, I started over the summer doing a focus group within the Park Rapids ALC. And it comprised of, through the summer and the fall, it was about 22 students that were surveyed, that were in this focus group. And I first started asking them, what is homelessness? And they said, it is a person in a tent on the side of a street. And so we, I went into more depth of what homelessness is. The couch hopping, the living in a vehicle, the not having a stable, permanent place to live. Well, then they began to understand what it was, and all of them knew someone, if not themselves, they identified, that were homeless. The first question, their answers were, they had strict households, arguing parents. They told the therapist too much, now CPS is involved. They had alcoholic parents, addicted parents, moved in with elderly grandparents, extended family arguments, living at a friend's house, had been in foster care for a long time, they slept in a car a few times. All students knew someone who was currently homeless. Eight of those students reported as having or wanting to run away. Number two, they have traded items for a safe place to stay. Associating with people whom they generally not associate for a safe place to sleep. When explaining the Minnesota student survey question about trading sexual activity for something of value and a safe place to stay, eight students reported knowing their peers who have done this. Number three, teachers are overwhelmed. They're also overpowering. They get mad, people get mad for no reason. When crisis occurs, getting social services involved, their, you know, their concern is, they have to take care of their siblings, their primary care for their siblings. These were kids ages 15 to 18 that are caring for their siblings, still trying to go to school every day, and actually, majority of them were working. So, you know, parents fighting, school expectations, teachers not being considerate, and that they're concerned about not doing good enough. And when we talked about, for number four, we talked about mental health services in the school. They have, you have one school social worker for the high school students. And when I asked about the other mental health services, such as stellar human services that are in the school, none of those 22 students knew that that service had existed. So they didn't even know that there were extra mental health supports in place. Even then, they were concerned about, well, my parents say it costs money. And what they don't know is there's a grant that covers it, but in the long run, you get a bill at home that just says the service was provided, and then, you know, so it looks like a bill, but it's not really a bill. So that was one of their concerns. And number five, they, a student replied, it's intimidating to ask for help. And I had other students said that they would never walk through a door and ask for help in the school, because then they know that there's other people that are gonna be getting involved. Number six, what concerns about the future they have, not making it where they wanna be. Stability, not knowing what to do next. Finances, extended family issues. They need people to listen versus only telling us what they want us to hear, and giving them options. And number seven, I wanted to kind of lighten the mood after having a difficult conversation, which is, they want to be a better role model for their siblings. They wanna think, thinking about the future makes them happy, and knowing they can make a difference. They remind themselves that they need to stay true to themselves, and trying not to disappoint my parents drives them to succeed. Next slide. So, I'm sure as you guys know, Mahubi holds the Homeless Youth Act grant, and that's really targeted to the ages 16 to 24. Minnesota State statute defines youth as ages 13 to 24. There is a lack of services for youth ages 12 to 18 in Hubbard County besides utilizing those outside resources we talked about earlier. "Yes" has been invited to apply for the United Way of Bemidji Area Spring Grant Cycle. As you saw from the focus group results, we are not accurately surveying our students on homelessness. This, the school has students, they check a box when they register, or they update their paperwork, and it asks, are you homeless? When I went to the office and I said, I just asked 22 students what homelessness is, and they had no idea. So you're asking students, are you homeless? And I was like, that is not a fair and accurate way to ask about homelessness. The school does a survey on drugs and alcohol every year, but they fail to survey students on homelessness. When the intersectionality of drugs and alcohol plays, plays into homelessness is very prevalent. I'm sure you guys remember Mr. Schumacher, John Schumacher. I was told a story that really hit home, and it was that he saw a student in the morning, come out of his vehicle, go into the gym locker room, shower, get dressed, ready to go. You would never guess, that kid slept in his vehicle overnight. John struggled with it for many, many days before he finally approached the student. That student then had to leave the school district to finish out the remainder of his senior year. Just imagine if "yes" was around and that youth could have stuck out his senior year and finished out his senior year at his school, where he slept in the parking lot and went into school every day to make himself look presentable and did his classes to the best of his ability without all the outside world concerns going on. We also have home-based housing services here in Hubbard County. That is, they build through Department of Human Services for people ages 18 plus. These programs would be offered for the youth ages 18 to 24 to help find permanent housing and get transitional living skills into play, along with rent-to-responsibility and tenant rights. So that's where we're focusing on, that age 12 to 18, and refer the 18 plus to the Mahubi and home-based housing services. Next slide. So while we're here today, we have some asks of the county commissioners. Consider land and building development for shelter use. Is there tax-forfeited property that could potentially be used for the shelter? Number two, support the mission of "yes" by recognizing there's an issue of homelessness in Hubbard County. To not quickly say no, because due to potential grant funding, accepting outside, youth outside of Hubbard County will help the organization's sustainability. These youth could come back into our community and serve as productive adults, and, you know, they felt supported while they were here. They may not have originally been from Hubbard County, but they felt the support, and they wanna come back and give back to the community that gave to them. Let's not disregard if we can assist other counties that have assisted us in the past and currently. They are more likely to house our youth when the shelter is full. Assist the Board of Directors and the Director with any barriers that may arise. Number three, lastly, consider funding opportunities for Yes, such as keeping our tax dollars local that are being paid for youth going to outside shelters. Next slide. Thank you for letting us present Yes to you here today. I know we gave you a lot of information and things to consider. However, we look forward to working with you and to make this happen for Hubbard County. We want to do right by our local communities, leaders, and youth who are the future of Hubbard County. We want to do this with your support. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I can understand, of course, when there's, you know, like abuse, or emotional abuse, or, you know, like the alcohol and drug issues in the home, but you gave an example of maybe too strict. What would be some examples of that?
You know, I, I didn't ask, I didn't ask for clarity, just because of the heaviness of the topic. But I just think about, you know, you have to do this at this time, whether it's chores or things like that. And then, if the youth pushes back at a parent or a guardian, or whoever's taking care of them, arguments can happen really quickly with youth. I have a twelve-year-old at home, and it's almost, I ask you to do this, but why do I have to do this? And then, you know, an argument can start up. That's going to cause tension in the home. If that's an ongoing thing, it's just going to be this continuous tension, tension, tension. So, I can only imagine, but I didn't want to expand on the issue anymore, just being that we were already talking as such a heavy topic with the students.
Caught my attention, because I used to require chores on my son. I mean, we had a resort, and you had to do his share of work.
Right.
So, I was just curious about that one. Any others?
Yes, I have two things. One is, so I'm on the Mahubi board, and so there's federal standards for length of stay. So, would there be a length of stay standard at this shelter?
Yes. So, just like, kind of like Evergreen Youth and Family Services up in Bemidji, their average day is about the seven to fourteen days. And that's really so that all the other resources and all the other services get put into play during that time. So, whether they run away, they come to the shelter, obviously, you know, a call to law enforcement's going to have to be made, social services gets involved. So, all those services, that gives that timeframe for those services to get involved.
Okay, so one of the Mahubis in the process of just the beginning, so you're just getting zoning for a homeless place? And the length of stay, after thirty days, the person has to leave, do you know? I agree with you, seven to fourteen days is a, that's kind of the norm. But if a person had to stay longer, can they stay longer than thirty days, do you know? Or do they have to be out? I'm just wondering if the youth-
I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I think that's definitely something that the Board of Directors and myself can discuss, because there's always extenuating circumstances as to why. Is it that a foster placement isn't open until, you know, a week later? You know, is it doable, you know? Is, are there still services that need to get put into play in the meantime? Is there something we're missing out on? Has there something that happened at home, and now transition back home can't happen? So, I'm sure there's reasons that we can adapt to, and that's part of meeting them, meeting their needs, meeting them where they're at.
And then, thank you, and then, we're all on a number of boards. I would love to meet your Board of Directors. Could you introduce those that are here?
I think I only have one. Yep, I only have one. I have Nicole Clancy.
Okay, thanks for coming, Nikki.
They all, we all, we all work full-time jobs. And we all have, I think, a couple of people have their own businesses, so they're trying to make it here today, and I think maybe a couple joined online, so.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
For those who don't stay, like the example in the car, are there some other areas? Because we don't really see out in the open where they're staying. Do they stay like with friends, or?
Couch hopping, yep, so staying with friends. Maybe they have to stay with their auntie one night, their grandma the next night, a friend the next night, because grandma or auntie doesn't want them at their house on a Tuesday or Thursday, and also, they have to find a different place to sleep. It was a very common theme in the ALC, where they would go from a friend's house to a friend's house to a friend's house, and they would rotate between those friends. Some of them said, you know, they have, their parent, their friend's parents will let them stay, you know, two, three nights, and then they got to move on.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank you for your presentation. I'm from District Five, so I'm in the northern part of Hubbard County. And I know, and I work in Bemidji as my, with my regular job. I know about the Evergreen House and some of the other facilities that are available up there. And I think that would be more where people in my district would probably go to, because they probably go there all the time for their jobs and stuff like that. But, and I was kind of surprised that there isn't something like this, maybe in a small scale or anything here in Park Rapids. I don't doubt that there's a need. I can think about myself forty-some years ago, in between jobs, not being able to pay rent and stuff like that, and, you know, staying with friends and family. And I had a lot of support with friends and family, so I never considered myself homeless. You know, but you think about it now, you hear about it a lot. And, and like I say, so I think back about when I was a young adult, let's put it that way. And I guess I could have been considered that, but I was always looking for a job and looking to take care of myself. And I'm assuming a lot of your youth that you're probably talking about are probably the same way, they want to take care of themselves. Like the one you talked about staying in their car, obviously, they'd figured out a way to make things work, and then it didn't work.
Right, right. Yep, and I've talked to, I was at Laporte School Board last night, and I was just telling Nikki this, that I was actually last on their agenda. And I got moved up on the agenda because the school board wanted their students, they had their senior class in there, and they wanted their students to hear this. And so, I have the support of the Laporte School Board, I have the support of the Park Rapids School Board. I'm meeting with some members of the Nevis School Board on Thursday, and then hopefully going to them. So, I'll be at the Nevis City Council meeting next month. So, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of support building going on there. I think, like you said, a lot of people don't know the definition of homelessness. So, they are really, you know, looking at that. And then, also on that note, you're from northern Hubbard County. I live right next to Ithaca State Park, so I'm on that northern end. I always get the question, is there a central location between all three schools? Probably not unless it's on a lake, and I've already been forewarned to get a, I can't remember what they call it, but to have the shelter on a lake would probably be pretty difficult. So, there's no central location, but I even talked to Laporte School. Is it possible that we have staff that can get kids to a bus stop for Laporte and get kids back? And then I also addressed, yeah, we're not accurately surveying students, because you have northern Hubbard County. A lot of the kids go to Bemidji. You have Akeley kids that are going to Walker. So, you are not accurately surveying the students. And we have to figure out how to make that happen for the whole, like, the whole county and all the students.
I support your idea here. I think that, for me personally, I have to do more research on it. I'll kind of see more what it's going to look like and stuff like that. But like I said, I think you gave a good presentation today.
Thank you.
I have one more question, Tom. So, Cory, do you have a plan as far as what the building, you know, have you gotten that far, the dollar amount you need to get it off the ground?
Well, if you look at housing prices right now, doesn't, it's not too favorable. He's laughing over there because he knows what I'm talking about. So, if we're looking at that five-bedroom house is what would be ideal for the shelter, you're probably looking at about five hundred thousand right now. We did look, I've looked at a house with a realtor, that people are willing to stop renovations on it. It's a five-bedroom house in the city of Park Rapids, nice little acre lot, very kind of secluded area. And they're asking about three hundred seventy-five thousand, which is pretty decent, given it's a five-bedroom house in Hubbard County. And then, so, anywhere from that, probably about three seventy-five to five hundred thousand dollars. And then, if you look at building, I mean, we're probably looking at about the same amount, if not just a little bit more. If we build, then we can build it the way we want it. But it all depends on where the market goes, I guess, and, you know, what we find to meet our need.
And Ben, let's fast forward to your opening. How many staff will you initially need?
So, for our draft budget that we have, it would be for four full-time staff, potentially a couple part-time, and then we would, you know, depend on some volunteers, obviously. And then, I do not plan on being that back office director. I want to be out on the floor with the youth, working with the youth, and filling in the roles of a staff also.
Mr. Chair, I'd have a few questions for Cory.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Tom a little bit. I think the first step would be, you really would need to have a better assessment and get better data. There's a couple of questions come to mind for me. One being, how many youth are homeless in Hubbard County on a part-time or regular basis? We don't seem to also have a hard number of exactly what that is. And then, I'd also be interested in, you know, is there a part of the county where the homeless youth problem is more prevalent? Because that would dictate where you would locate a facility. So, until we get some of that more concrete data, you know, I'd hate to have you spending money and then find out it doesn't quite fit your needs.
Correct. So, with the fourteen percent, with the youth age range, what the Minnesota State Statute defines it as, you have the fourteen percent. So, I was just playing with rough numbers, if you take seventh grade to twelfth grade, because that's about that age range, right? And you take the student numbers from Park Rapids, Nevis, and Laporte, it's about an estimated about one hundred and fifty students. And that's not considering those that go to Bemidji, or those that go to Walker that live in Hubbard County. And, yeah, we, I mean, I completely agree, we need to accurately, we need to get some solid numbers. But until we actually define homelessness for these youth, they're going to mark the box if they're living with a friend that they have a safe place to stay, and they're not homeless.
Yeah, so you need a better, more accurate way to survey.
Correct. And I wish I knew the perfect answer on that, and I'm working on it.
Dave, did you have another question?
No, no, that was it. I just think that would be the important first step that really has to be taken, so you really get some more concrete data, so you make sure you're doing the right thing in the right places.
Correct.
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
So, when Evergreen started out, a developer built their place, I believe, and then they leased it. Have you looked at that option?
One option that has been brought to our attention is raising a certain amount of funds, and then having a contractor that wants a write-off at the end of the year for taxes. So, we are still playing with that idea, it's not out the window, because we're still, we're going to be starting strategic planning. So, that's probably where a lot of our answers are going to come pretty clear for that, and our plan. I mean, it's definitely something that we can look into, it's nothing's out of the question at this point.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. All right, next on the agenda is Highway.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of things for you today. We will start with, we need to review and approve final payment for Project CP-029-119-022 and other associated projects. So, this is our County Road 119 over south of Nevis, along with County Road 82 that heads kind of east of Nevis and then south, and then a couple of township projects with Nevis Township and Todd. And all the work is completed, paperwork is in hand, and we would ask that final payment be made to Knife River Materials in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. And I believe I had in the agenda packet the breakdown of what each of those projects cost.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. David, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That passes.
And our second one, review and approve a re-quote for the service truck body and crane purchase for the Highway Department. I brought this to you a couple of meetings ago. We had a quote that we thought was good. When we went back with approval of the quote, they come back and say, well, by the way, that service body has increased in price. We can no longer get the same crane, the welder is another thousand dollars higher, and so, we're left holding a re-quote on this. And so, at this time, I would ask for approval to the same vendor, Bird's Truck Equipment, Inc., out of Moorhead. Total amount, one hundred nine thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars. And that'll hopefully complete our service truck, so.
Nine thousand more than the last one?
Yeah, just about ten, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? David?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that passes.
Not much to update for projects, just getting prepared for this next year, unless you have any questions for us.
Got the snowplows already?
Oh, they're ready. They were out a little bit this last weekend, like some icy roads.
Might need them in January, February.
Yeah, maybe not, that'd be good. Yeah. Thank you.
Natural Resources.
Morning. I'll be quick, I just have one item. The item is to review and approve a state fiscal year twenty-four grant and aid application from the Palbonian Forest Riders OHM Club out of Akeley for the Martinno Recreation OHM Trails in Hubbard County to act as the local government sponsor. There's no cost to Hubbard County, it would be us making sure that they're maintaining their trails and being their local sponsor so they can get funding.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
You want to finish?
And, yeah, that's it, just being their local sponsor for fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay, well, we got a motion.
I'll second.
Second, okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and then David's on it?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
So, how are you coming with the preparation of the sale in January for the land?
So, we are discussing that, and probably after talking to realtors, like you guys have mentioned, pushing it off to March.
All of them?
That were on that list from before, yep, yep.
So, you're not going to just take out that one parcel? You're going to, you're just going to delay all of it till March?
Yes, yep, yep. And then, we were, I was at a land commissioner meeting last Friday, and none of the other counties are having land sales till after this court case is figured out. So, that's something I really want to talk to Jonathan with. If we're the only county having a land sale, that might be tough to-
Tom and I went to a presentation at AMC on that, and it sounds like there's a workable solution coming down the pipeline.
Okay, yep, and I hope we find out soon, and it's just, if we put this money in escrow, can we hold it, or do we have to apportion it? If we have to pay people back four hundred thousand dollars, that might be a little tough if we don't have it. No, I'm going to get ahold of Jonathan, we'll get it figured out, but looking at March right now.
Yeah, we brought that up from the September policy, AMC Policy Committee meeting, where Hennessy County was doing that, and some others were too. So, we thought, well, maybe some of our high-value ones, we can do the same.
And they're looking at going back fifteen years, so that's what I learned.
What they heard this week is way different, so it's going to be interesting to see what happens.
Yeah, and I'm looking forward to hearing what they figure out. Yeah, so thank you.
Okay. Okay, solid ways.
Good morning. All right, first agenda item I have for you this morning, uh, is we're looking to add, uh, two cameras to our existing camera, um, system that we have at the south transfer station. Uh, these cameras would be to monitor where our old transfer station building is. Uh, there'd be a camera inside and a, um, that's a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree camera and one on the outside, um, for where we're planning to move our reuse area to. The quote we obtained was from the contractor that we installed, uh, had the camera system installed in two thousand twenty-two for our entire site. And that was from Pro Custom and Security out of Detroit Lakes for four thousand eight dollars and forty-five cents. And that'd be my recommendation. So we can have that area adequately covered at the, the facility there, so.
You have a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 David?
Aye.
That's approved.
All right, and the next, uh, agenda item I have, um, is to review and approve the two thousand twenty-four solid waste assessment. So at the September work session, we proposed to increase the assessment five percent for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the residential assessment would go from two hundred dollars up to two hundred and ten dollars. And the commercial minimum assessment would go, uh, from two hundred and fifty up to two hundred and sixty-three dollars, depending on volume generated. Kinda, as I probably recapped before, you know, the raise in assessment is due to, you know, wages and benefits, continued increases in equipment parts and supplies. And we're also continuing to plan for major expenses that will be coming due to, uh, closing, um, continuing to close and cover our demolition landfills. And then also paying back our landfill cover project that we completed in two thousand twenty-three. Um, we also, um, continue to generate more waste every year. And, uh, through November, um, based on our reports, uh, we are on pace to generate six percent more garbage, um, in two thousand twenty-three than in two thousand twenty-two.
Josh, I got a question on that. So what kind of garbage is generating? Is it just people or just? You know, like getting disposable meals or is it building or is it a combination or?
Uh, it's probably pretty hard to pinpoint. I mean, I think it's just a mixture of everything, you know. We're continuing to, county continues to grow. There continues to be more, um, stores and businesses and residents coming in, so. And then you have, sometimes you have bigger projects that come into like the, the pipeline can influence and stuff like that, so. But I think, you know, we're pretty much, we're always, you know, on that about three percent a year average, if not more, like this year is up to six percent, so.
And Josh, isn't the tipping fees going up also?
Um, the tipping fees, I, uh, well, we'll have the fee scheduling at the next meeting, um, but I didn't have any proposed increases, proposed increases to, uh, the tipping fees.
Okay.
Um, there was a few minor adjustment, I mean, for, and that was, I guess, basically, um, for the, the garbage and the demolition rates. Uh, we'll have some minor adjustments just to cleaning some language up in there. And then, uh, the one that did increase some would be our tire prices, um, based on the, the contract increase that you saw at the last board meeting, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so some of the attachments I had, uh, the first attachment was just, uh, the rate sheet, um, showing that five percent increase. And the second, uh, attachment, uh, shows the increase and, and where you've been, um, on the right there the last, uh, since two thousand twenty, so the last, over the last four, four years, so. So my recommendation would be to approve the twenty-four, twenty-four solid waste assessment, um, as attached and hope you open to any questions.
So Josh, increasing the rates by five percent when your costs are going up six percent, are you ending up short or is it not a direct correlation?
Um, I, you know, I don't see it as a, you know, direct correlation, just because some of that waste coming in, you know, we're getting tipping fees for as well, so.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, I think, you know, based on, you know, the preliminary budget I had and, um, went through in September, um, I've continued to look through, you know, our year-end spendings. Um, and I don't think we're quite on as good a track as we were back in September, um, due to some increased costs. But I think, uh, feeling pretty good yet about, uh, the five percent increase, so.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have one question. You know, like a resort, when the lodge, rec room, laundry, shower is all in one building, is it eighty-eight dollars or is it for each one of those items?
Uh, it'd be per, per building typically, so.
Per, per what?
Per building.
Per building, okay. Cause I know some really are. Okay. Uh, so we got a motion and a second?
Hannah, I have a comment. This is still one of the best, for a resident, I, I mean, you can't beat this, even though it continues to go up. Other counties where you have to pay per load and you look at how neat our county is, this is a really good deal. Thank you, Josh.
Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? David?
Aye.
All right, um, I did have one update, uh, really quick. So I'm not sure how many of you have heard, but on Friday morning, we did have another fire at the, the transfer station in Park Rapids. Um, it was a small fire inside our recycling compactor container, uh, that was caused by a lithium, another rechargeable battery pack again being placed in the recycling. Um, so we have some press releases going out and, you know, continuing to educate people that, you know, all, all batteries need to be coming into the household hazardous waste area, the transfer stations. But, um, with this, uh, we actually was able to find the battery pack, um, just looked like a, you know, kind of a, what would be like maybe in a remote control car or something. It's like five batteries that are in a pack together. Once it seemed like once it went into the, the auger compactor, that shorted the battery out and then started the fire right in the back into the recycling compactor. So again, things we have to continue to work on to try to mitigate that and educate, uh, residents and businesses. And the one thing I'll point out too is, you know, luckily our, our staff was right there. So they did a great job responding to the fire. We did have to call the fire department and they also did a great job, uh, responding quickly and, uh, we got it under control. But just, things are always seems to, always seems to be, seem to be working well on, so.
Sounds like no damage to the buildings or anything?
No, I don't think we'll have any IMCIT claims.
Josh, do you think it would help? Because I think people have good intentions of recycling, whatever. If you put a big sign on each one, no batteries, must.
Well, like, I mean, every dumpster, we did that. We do have a sign, or we should have anyway, no batteries, no ashes on each dumpster.
Okay, I'll have to look, cause I haven't.
I mean, it could, some of them maybe have got replaced since then, but, you know, it's something we, we have tried to do that and, um, yeah, I don't know if more signs, more signs is the answer to, or what, but something we're always continuing to work on and try to get that education piece out there, so.
Yeah, some people may, uh, accidentally slip it by and, cause you know, sometimes you get, uh, a little implement that has, uh, a battery in it, you know, like a portable water pick or something like that. And don't even think about that.
Yep, well, I mean, uh, pretty much a lot of the devices nowadays have them batteries built in there where you can't even get them out. So that's, you know, things too where we wanna, if it has a battery inside it, we wanna be going through that at our household hazardous waste area, so.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Social Services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, I've got a couple of, uh, items on the agenda for today. Um, Marley would have been here, uh, but she, they have a bunch of sick staff and so she's covering the WIC clinic this morning, so. Uh, just, we've got before you the, the public health contract with CHI St. Joe's. Again, I mean, they, they don't ask for, for much and they do a lot. And so, um, it's a really good relationship we have with them. And I think it does, it saves the county money in the long run, um, still, uh, contracting with CHI. So, um, again, barring any questions, um, that I could possibly answer, that I just would move or ask for the approval of the contract. And Jonathan has already, actually already signed it and looked it over, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I think, uh, Steve was first. Um, any more discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? David?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved.
And then, um, the next item I have is a technology grant for rural communities through our Adult Mental Health Initiative. Um, they, they were really focused on, um, trying to update technology so that for the telehealth. And I know Tom sits on the LAC and, um, through the Adult Mental Health Initiative, we're trying to work to, to get a regional, um, LAC together to, so that the LACs can, from the different counties can work together. Doesn't always, you know, travel for most of those individuals isn't, isn't necessarily the easiest thing. And so, um, with this grant, we would purchase, um, and upgrade our, our, uh, conference room where we hold the LAC meetings. Um, that could then, we could, uh, connect with them as well as, um, any telehealth, uh, stuff that individuals could do. Um, and they, we got, um, the approval to spend up to ten thousand dollars. And then you can see the, um, the quote, uh, from Innovative is below that. And they are a state-approved, a straight, state-contract-approved, um, place. Um, I did pass this all by Fred, um, and they looked it over and they thought, uh, that it would be good. I asked if we could do it cheaper through them, um, and the install. And he said, if you can get it for these prices and have them install it, he said it would just be way better. Of course, um, we would have somebody from IT there so that they could help operate it and know how to, to, to do it all. So I did, like I said, I did check with IT and they thought it would be, um, it, this is a pretty good deal through them and a good system that would be easy to set up.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Um, any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? David?
Aye.
Passes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I had a new knee put in, so I'm, I'm hobbling along.
It only gets better.
Yeah.
That's what I hear from people that get new knees.
Oh, it's getting better all the time.
How long ago was that?
Uh, four weeks now. Yeah. I can tell the improvement based on how easy I can get into the truck, you know.
Yeah.
It was quite a struggle at first, but. All right, few items on my agenda. Uh, the first thing would be I'm requesting the board to approve the purchase of service agreement between Hubbard County and the Lakes Area Dive Team. This is our annual agreement that we've had for many years. The amount is five thousand dollars. And again, that is for their services if and when we have a search and rescue or recovery, um, situation in our county. I'm assuming year to year, it's different amount of the times you need to use these people? Yes. Some years, um, we don't have any call-outs for them at all, which in the end is, is a good thing. And sometimes we have a few, absolutely. But they've recovered evidence, you know, for us in a homicide. Ended up in the water. Obviously, um, you know, what you, you don't want them for is the recovery, you know, of drowning victims, which, which is what we use them for the most. Um, I hate to say, but, um, but yeah, they're, they provide a service that we, we can't do ourself. And for this money. Absolutely.
It's been at this price for a while now.
Yep, it's a set amount. It hasn't changed. Um, so, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second then.
David seconded?
Yep.
All right. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? David?
Aye.
Right, that's approved.
So I, I just have a quick question. Uh, our lakerie opened, you know, it was frozen. It's wide open now.
Yeah.
And so I'm thinking about people coming in from the area that don't, you know, that first few feet will be ice and then all of a sudden, is there anything, I suppose the DNR would have to post, huh?
DNR doesn't do any posting, but, but honestly, with the number of lakes that we have in the county, we simply can't post all of them. This is something that people have to use some common sense and, you know, just, you know, be very careful. You know, we, and I, I personally do it every year where we post down on Third Crowing. And we do it there simply because we have had multiple people go through, we've had multiple deaths and, um.
So could lake associations post at the public access?
Um, yeah, they can.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, and that wouldn't be, you know, a bad thing, you know.
Yeah, it's really unusual this year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah, listening to the news and that, there seems to be a, a lot of people going in, all, all over the state. Yeah. I mean, there was a couple up in Bemidji. Besides rescuing a deer. Yeah, yeah, I saw that as well.
Uh, that one on Third is a dangerous one, cause at night.
Yep.
At night, you cannot tell where the thick ice is gonna be. So you, I, whenever I went through there at night, I just went all the way to the other side of the lake to make sure I was safe.
We haven't had any issues there in thirteen years, since we started signing it. And, um, so it's been, it's been good and, and hopefully that continues. And the problem is, you know, we haven't been able to get out there yet to do it because it has to be at least somewhat safe for us as well, you know, to be able to get out there. And, um, I always drag, you know, one of my officers out there and we jump on the ranger and he's white-knuckled and, and I, I deal with ice probably a little better than he does. But yeah, we'll do it again. Um, we just, typically it's just a little bit before Christmas. But this year, you know, we haven't had the cold weather. And if you don't have the cold weather, as you know, you're not gonna get the ice. But it'll get done. Second item, uh, very similar to the first, requesting approval to per, uh, the purchase of service agreement between Hubbard County and the Hubbard County Sheriff's Posse. And this is, uh, very similar to the dive team, uh, although substantially less money. We base the amount on, uh, the posse and the sheriff's office, simply split the amount of the taxes on the land that we have up there. We use it as a training center, you know, we had to do our firearms up there, plus we also use the cabin. So what we simply do, we pay half the taxes and that's what we're basing the four hundred ninety-nine dollars on. So the posse does, you know, um, search and rescue stuff for us as well. And, um, we, we do utilize them from time to time. So just requesting approval of that. It's the same, we do it every year.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second. And this is another one of those, heck, I mean, heck of a deal. Yeah.
Yeah.
For costs and that, we, we get that back so much more. Oh, we do. When, when we need it. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? David?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved.
All right, uh, ten C, um, requesting the board to accept resolution authorizing the execution of the snowmobile safety enforcement grant. Um, for the next two years, it's nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars and that is for overtime for our snowmobile enforcement. Will you need that this winter? Um, we, not yet, I'll tell you that. And here's what happens, if, if we're not able to use it for wages, uh, we can purchase equipment with it. So one way or the other, you know, we're either able to update some things or we use it for enforcement purposes. Okay. Yeah. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? Any more? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? David?
Aye.
Approved.
All right, ten D, requesting, uh, the board to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of the OHV, which is basically the ATV safety grant. It's, uh, also for a two-year period, which is fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. And this as well is for overtime and/or equipment. And, um, we do this, we renew this every time because as you know, we do have an ATV program, an ATV officer that does enforcement. And, um, it's, uh, in this area of recreation, it's, uh, highly utilized, so.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? David? David, didn't hear you. David didn't hear your vote.
Aye.
All right, the last item I have, just, I just wanna have some brief discussion on, there was a, at a previous board meeting, there was some discussion, we weren't here, over our request for a body scanner. And some of the discussion was some, some things that were inaccurate data on the actual machine. And I just, I brought Joe Henry here, my jail administrator, to kinda talk about, um, this body scanner and, and what is, some, some facts behind it, just so there is no confusion over, um, some inaccurate data. And I know one thing, Joe, if you wanna touch on the portability of it.
Sure. We're actually looking, I got bids from, from two different vendors. And both of them would, would fit, one is actually, um, quite small, about the size of a person. Um, both would fit within the current jail that we have now, I found a spot, one is a little bigger than the other. And, um, they're portable, you, they're on wheels, they can be moved. So if we go ahead with the, the remodel, you know, we just roll it on through. Um, there's.
There's no setup fees to move it.
No.
This is a plug-and-play type of system. It plugs into a one-ten outlet. So there's no, we don't have to contract with anybody to set it up at the next location.
I know that was one of my questions, I didn't know, you know, do you need to bring in special equipment to move it? Does it need an electrician to come in and wire stuff?
Nope.
One-ten, one-ten outlet and then.
Two-wheeler and a plugging it in, even I could probably do that.
Yep.
And they're on wheels, so the one is a little bit bigger, you might have to tip it a little bit to get it through a door, but other than that, both of them are very portable.
And I'm assuming before the remodel, if you were squeezed for space, it would go in the sallyport or something?
Um, I don't know, I, I think.
I mean, it could, but I don't think we're gonna be, they're, they're small. I mean, the one, um, the bigger, the bigger of the two, the sales guy I'm talking to sent a footprint. It was actually a cloth footprint that you could lay on the floor and, and put it wherever you wanted. And it's, you know, a little bit longer than this table and about as wide as that. So it's, it's, it's not big. You put it, and, and my current plan is if we go with that model, is we'll put it right in front of, I don't remember if you guys, or if you guys remember, any of the blue doors going into the garages where people come through, I'd put it right on our side of that door and everyone would go through there. So it'd be right before they even get into the secure part of the jail. Or right after, I mean, so.
So Joe, would this be like, uh, would it be a wand that you would go, you know, around? Or would it be, you know, when you go through TSA at the airport, you just walk through?
It's the TSA, well, one is actually like that, the, the bigger, the bigger of the two that I was explaining before, um, that is, they stand there, they get scanned and they, they, they go through. The other one's a little bit different, um, it only scans up to about here, so, so the head is not scanned, it's just the lower body. Um, you actually have to kinda step up into that one, but it's, yeah, they're very small.
Another issue was some concern over potential radiation levels.
I just asked that question out of curiosity, yeah.
Yeah, and Joe can touch on that a little bit, it's, they're very safe, very, very safe.
Yeah, I mean, we have to get a variance from this state, but once we get a variance because of where, it is, uh, using radiation, um, the amount of these scans, we can safely scan a person up to two hundred fifty times a year. Um, so that's gonna cover ninety-nine point nine percent of everybody who comes through the jail, we're gonna scan them once. Um, there, there is no, um.
We've never had an inmate that would have exceeded two hundred fifty times a year.
Probably not, and the nice thing.
I was wondering actually about that.
That's probably a good thing.
Yes, it is.
And if we do.
Okay.
If, if we do have that inmate or occasional inmate that stays there longer than that, or, or comes through more often than that, um, the machines are all programmed, there's a program and they can randomize it. So they don't know if they're getting, um, scanned or not, once they get to a point where you start being concerned about how much, how many times you're scanning them, which it's never gonna happen.
Yeah.
But it, it can do it.
And even staff, I don't know that staff would even be getting the radiation.
No, the radiation is contained to those boxes. Um, and the control station, there's a, there's a control station with both of them, I believe, and it's a little computer stand with a monitor and a keyboard. Um, that's on wheels as well, and that's away from those units themselves, so, um. Yes, there's no, there's no danger to staff at all.
Then one o, one other item that I recall was the amount of training required. And I think there was maybe concern that this is gonna take six months of training, which simply is not accurate.
The training for them is a two-day, I think probably for both of them are, it's, it's two days. Um, and I think that information or that misconception came from the fact that you don't, you're not good at reading a scan the third day after training. It takes a little bit of, eh, this is a skill, it's not something that's automatic. We're not gonna be able to see everything and, and identify anything or everything in a person's body right away. So it does take training, it takes practice. Um, and I, maybe that's what that was referring to, I don't know, but literally the training is two days. At setup.
So is this one of the units you're looking at?
This is the bigger, the tech eighty-four is the, the larger one where you actually walk through it. Or walk into it.
The one where you couldn't scan, they had, you know, thinking if people wanna smuggle something in, couldn't they use their nostrils or? I'm pretty naive about stuff like this, so.
The thing is with some of that though, staff, sorry Joe, is physically able to check mouths.
Okay.
You know, so that is not as much of a concern, I don't believe.
No.
As the, the other body cavities that we simply cannot.
We make them put their fingers in there, open up wide, pull out any dentures. Um, we go through their hair, we check ears and noses. So there's much less danger of them being able to get something in on their, up here rather than down there.
And we are gonna be doing site visits with a couple different counties that each have these different machines, these different units, to see what they recommend and then we'll decide what we feel, you know, would be the best, you know, fit here, you know, the larger one or the, the smaller one. We just simply don't know, that's why we provided Jeff with the data on both, cause we haven't narrowed it down yet. But we, we will be doing site visits. And that's, that's all I have, if the board has any other questions on the, the scanner or anything else for me, um, I'd be happy to answer for you.
It was good to, to get those, to get this presentation here.
Yeah.
My, my big concern was, was staff.
Sure.
You know, cause I remember in the old days when you go to the dentist, they'd throw a vest on you and everything to get, get your teeth x-rayed.
Yep.
Now it's different technology or whatever.
It is, yeah, they don't even do that anymore, so, yeah. No, and.
You know, the accumulation, because, like, you know, like you were saying, two hundred fifty, get, well, you'd almost have to be coming into the jail more than every other day.
Yeah, and some of that too is, let's just say somebody, we have an existing inmate and maybe you suspect, you know, that maybe somebody is, is hiding some drugs on them even after they've been in, for example, you can pull them out and run them through the scanner. So it, it really doesn't mean that each time they come in initially, so it could be for your existing inmates too. But like Joe said, you can set it up, you know, to do, you know, the non-scans where they're just being checked, they, to keep them on their toes a little bit too, so.
Which, and, and that would, in that situation, you use it for like an STS worker or a work release that are coming and going for.
Daily.
Daily.
Yeah.
Um, if you ever hit that threshold, which would be a, a lot, um, then that's, you turn on the randomizing or whatever it's called where, they don't know if they're getting truly scanned or, or not. Keeps them on their toes.
I didn't think about sentence to serve.
Yep.
I could see that five days a week.
Yep.
Twenty, uh, fifty-two year, uh, weeks out of the year.
Yep, and then the work release people that, you know, the SDS crew, they're monitored by ours, by our staff, you know, cause they're with the crew leader. But the, the work release crew, they leave the jail, or Huber people, leave and then go to their job throughout the day and then come back. So they're obviously not, you know, monitored by us, so you, you never know what they could be bringing back into the jail.
Sure.
So that would be, you know, for this purpose, you know, as well.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Jeff, I'm not finding the right paperwork I want here, how much was the scanner and the budget?
Uh, approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think, is what was on the capital.
Okay.
Project list.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Environmental Services.
Good morning. So the sole agenda item I have for the board today is the proposed shoreline management ordinance amendment, uh, with the planning commission's recommendation. Some background on the, the subject. Um, on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amendment application was submitted to the, uh, department uh, for a proposed education use category to be added to the shoreline, shoreline management ordinance as a conditional use. Uh, the planning commission held a public hearing on the application at its October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting and made a recommendation to the county board that the use be added to the shoreline management ordinance. At the county board's November seventh, twenty twenty-three meeting, uh, the county board directed the planning commission to do further work in developing a draft of the proposed amendment language. The planning commission took that, uh, backup at its November twenty, twenty twenty-three meeting, uh, where the planning commission unanimously recommended the attached draft to the board's consideration. Um, the recommendation to the board would be to decide if it finds a proposed draft acceptable and if so, uh, to schedule and hold a public hearing to consider the, uh, shoreline management ordinance. And I'm open to any questions that the board might have.
I just have a comment, I was at the meeting and, um, after we'd sent back, you know, they asked why and then they came up with the provisions that was well thought through and the discussion was good, I think they did a complete job.
Yeah, I like the, uh, recommendation that it came up with. So it's gonna be, um, tier, uh, two, three, and four, or it'll be allowed with a, you know, conditional use permit. And then they got a, some special provisions in section four oh two.
And that would only be on recreational and general development lakes.
Right.
Any questions or comments?
Brian, do you have a?
To set a date?
Do you have a recommendation for a date for a public hearing?
Um, no, I don't have a recommendation there, it'll be, I guess, what would.
Timeframe required?
Um, there it would be, uh, probably the latest would be the second January meeting for the board.
We have, uh, we have to provide notice, not more than thirty and not fewer than twenty or ten days. So, uh, I would recommend, uh, January sixteenth as a date for that public hearing at nine thirty. Uh, that would allow us to, it gives us thirty days from now so we can get that in next week and have the notice in in time.
And it's a busy time of year for people and so by delaying it till the sixteenth, the public, hopefully would.
Pushing it, pushing it any further back, it's in the next year's planning. If, if, if this is something you support, then, um, getting that public hearing scheduled as soon as possible, which I think is the sixteenth of January.
We need a motion to set a date?
That's what we would need, would be a motion to set a date for a public hearing.
Yeah.
I'll need to set a date on the sixteenth.
I'll second.
All right, any more, uh, comments? All right, setting the date of January, uh, sixteenth, a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? David? Your vote? David?
Give me your.
Aye.
Okay.
So at nine thirty, I'm assuming?
Nine thirty, on sixteenth.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, we have the finance, is that what Kay's here for?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I am here to request approval for the contract amendment between Mahubi Atwa, um, contract with long-term homelessness and, uh, subgrant, sub-grantee for Hubbard County, of which we are the fiscal, met, uh, fiscal agent, excuse me. That contract was extended through twenty twenty-five with an additional one point five million.
So I'm on the Mahubi board and I'll just say, this is, like Kay said, this is a pass-through grant and Mahubi really is the leading, um, organization in Hubbard County dealing with homelessness.
So when you look on the monthly, um, audit, auditors form with the money, you know, money paid, and then you see Mahubi, but that's what this is, right?
That is correct.
Yep.
I'll, I'll move to approve if no one else has any comments.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? David, your vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay. David, we're required to do a roll call vote for those online, that's why I'm asking each time. Okay, we're to the administrator.
I have a few things, quick reminder that our truth and taxation meeting is this Thursday at six o'clock in this room.
Just, something coming out in the paper, I haven't seen anything.
I haven't, I haven't seen a correction, we have talked to Shannon.
I saw it in the, uh, posted in the enterprise as, um, the seventh.
Yeah, I let Jeff know about that.
We, we contacted her and, and asked if she'd printed corrections, she said she would, we have not seen that yet. But, um, we did, when we learned of that, we posted on the front door, the correction. Um, all the proposed tax statements I came out with, people had the correct information on them. Truth be told, it might be one reason in January that I don't put that date on the meeting list because we'll just wait until September when we actually set the date. That's what happened, we, we had it on the meeting list in, in January.
Changed it.
And it got published somewhere and it, and then we changed it because of, of AMC. So, uh, I might just update the, the year's meeting to not include the truth and taxation. When we set that date in September at the preliminary levy, then we'll have the announcement for that. Avoid the possibility.
December.
We won't even put it down.
Okay.
Uh, we're required to set that date in September when we set the preliminary levy and that's plenty of notice for that. Um, we have, Corey and Joe were here, um, Bruce Schwartzman from BKV and his group are gonna be here for the first, for the kickoff meeting for that project on Tuesday. Um, they're gonna start with a tour, I'm gonna have some conversation with them and then, uh, we're gonna start getting into drawing, start getting into preliminary, uh, elements to include in the design. Uh, we'll ask the question about the scanners, all that stuff and make sure that we're, we're good with that. But I, when I looked at the, um, at the scanners that, uh, the cut sheets that Joe provided me, I can see how they, they're not gonna cost anything to move. Um, and as it, as it turns out, this year, the, the state or the county has allocated public safety money. So whether we buy those in twenty-three dollars or twenty-four budget or, you know, twenty-five with the project, isn't gonna matter because we're gonna use that same source of funding for those, for that equipment that we're, that we should already have received this year. So next week, when I bring the budget for approval, I'll be bringing the, uh, the capital list, which includes for public safety, the, the second portion of the radios that we agreed to last year, uh, the stuff all, uh, related to the outfit of the vehicles and then this piece of equipment. So you won't be, uh, approving those purchases, you'll just be approving, setting that much money aside for the capital and then you'll still approve those purchases when they actually happen, which will probably, I don't know if they'll be in this year, well, they won't be in this year if they're not next Tuesday. But you'll be approving those monies to be set aside for that. Uh, we do have candidates for a highway engineer. Uh, Jed's last day with us is December twenty-eighth. Um, and I know some people had expressed interest in serving on that panel, I would like two commissioners to serve. Myself and Gina will be on the panel and, uh, the district MINDOT engineer will also serve on that panel, so we have some technical, um, and some background history, uh, on those projects. And we're targeting Wednesday next week, we're gonna try to get them done between ten and two. The backup date would be Thursday afternoon late, it would be after, between three and five would be the other options. And those, um, those times are based on the district engineers' availability and us wanting to get them done before Christmas. So.
How many candidates?
Uh, we have three.
Three.
Yep. We have three qualified candidates. So if you're interested in being in that interview panel, I would basically be asking you to say you'd be available for both of those blocks of time next week. I'd want to make sure that our interview committee is the same for all the candidates. And our first choice is to get them all done Wednesday.
David, you, has, you wanted to be on that, or is, is that date next week okay for you?
Yes, that would work for me.
Okay. Anybody else would like to be on that?
I would like to, um, but if someone that I know has applied or is part of that panel, I don't feel I should probably serve them, so it gets a little complicated. I haven't seen the list in. So it gets a little complicated. I haven't seen the list of names or anything to see if I've worked with any of them.
Would no, need to know today?
Um, I would need, we can verify that after the meeting. So if, um, like, I don't have the names.
Okay, very.
But, um, we can check with HR, and they can, and you can ask them a couple of questions. They'll find out if there's a conflict.
Okay.
I don't see the names until, until the date of the interview. I see the, I see the application materials and the background that they provide. In this situation, I can narrow it down pretty close, right? But I don't actually have the name, so.
Why don't we just go and say Steve for now, and then we can choose a backup if Steve cannot. So why don't we decide on a backup?
That makes sense. Um, yeah, next week, I'm pretty tight. What time was it Wednesday?
Uh, we're going to try to be between ten and, we were going to be ten and four for the engineer, but Gina said two. So ten and two, that's her availability. So if we can get three interviews done in that four-hour block and allow for lunch, that's as efficient as we can be. Thursday at three or four would be the backup.
I, I don't know if I want to be put as the third and then.
And not be Shar.
Well, this isn't an area of expertise for me, so if either of you wanted to. So I would defer to you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be the backup if Steve's not able to. I prefer Steve to be there.
If you can't, then I.
Well, I'll be, maybe I better check right now.
And that's what I'm thinking too, like, Shar, I mean, I do have some knowledge, but nothing like Steve would have. And it's nice to hear that the district engineer is going to be there too, because I was kind of wondering about that too, if, like, if Jeff from Highway Department. But then there's kind of like, if then that would be maybe Jeff's boss in the future.
We, we thought through a lot of permutations, and, uh, and I had a conversation with Brian, the district engineer, and he's happy to sit in. The other option that we would, could have suggested would have been to, um, have a sitting county engineer, a Jason county engineer sit in on the, on the interviews. While I would like to either have Christina or Jeff's input, it's probably not fair to put them in the spot of interviewing for their boss. And Brian said he'd be available, so.
Perfect.
I'm available next Monday.
Okay, so we'll, after the meeting administratively, we'll figure out whether Steve can be there or we need Tom to step in.
So you'll know today then, so I can, if I do have?
Yes, after the meeting, we'll, we'll check and, and verify that Steve does not have a conflict.
Sounds good.
And then the last item that I have is really just kind of a cleanup thing. Um, you know, we voted to approve the combination of the assessor and recorder's office. So now one oh one on your new budget is zeroed out, and one oh six will say property records. Um, and then I was looking through the rest of the headings, and, and our IT department is still listed as data processing. So administratively, I just asked Kay, I said, just change the heading in that one. And then I looked, and I said, well, we should think about changing our social services to human services. Well, it's been changed in IFS for a long time. It's the budget and the reports all, all come from human services department. So, um, the question is, for consistency's sake, do we just want to report as human services going forward, since that's already been made in IFS, or are there concerns about that? It's, there's very few departments that are reporting as social services anymore.
Yes.
Yes, we should do that?
Yes.
Or yes, there are concerns?
No, I don't have any concerns. We change it, so it's.
So that'll, that'll just administratively, it'll trickle down a few things. It'll change the department heading on the website. Uh, it'll change titles, et cetera. Just, I was, I was going to ask to change that in IFS, but I realized it has been that way since before I got here, and we just haven't caught up to it. So if there's no problems, we'll just clean that up administratively. And then, um, like I said, TNT on Thursday and budget next week. I don't know if there are any other questions for me or concerns people have. I, I will have additional materials out with next week's, ahead of TNT and for next week's meeting, specifically the background information on the requested positions, the history of requested and added positions. Denise has already got that pulled together, and I can get that out to you with the, with the meeting minute, meeting materials for next week.
All right, um, now we go to committee reports. You want to go first?
Sure, I have none.
Oh, that's easy.
I was surprised at the last night when I was, looked at my calendar since our last board meeting. I had one exit interview, and that, of course, is an employee thing, so I can't talk about that. I was surprised. Of course, it was Thanksgiving and.
Do you have answers for us financially for the HRA board?
Um, they've gone through. I was going to present next Tuesday because the HRA meeting will be Monday. They've gone through the financial stuff. They've been working with Kathy Henry, the board chair, on that song. They found some of their errors and stuff like that. Some of the, some of the issues, I think, have been corrected. Uh, I want to thank Jonathan for making an amended contract for HRA and HRDC. They were, I got an update late yesterday. They were hoping to have that back from the HRDC's attorney. Looking at it myself and staff at HRDC, looking at it, didn't see any issues, but they just wanted to run it by their attorney real quick. There was a question that still is outstanding with, uh, DW Jones, and I told him it was my understanding that they have to, in a sense, have a separate agreement with the HRA board instead of going through HRDC. But they're hoping to have all this stuff ready for Monday's meeting so that everything can be signed and all, everything can be clarified. I guess the way staff has been feeling with the HRDC is they're eager to get going. They've been doing some grant writing and stuff like that, but they want to get more into that part of the process versus trying to get the accountability paperwork stuff clarified. So I'll have a better presentation next week.
I don't, I don't have anything. I didn't have any meetings or anything. Um, I just wanted to make note that I have a funeral out of state on Thursday, so I won't be here for the TNT. Is it desired that I attend remotely?
We typically don't broadcast the TNT.
Okay, all right.
We haven't in the past.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
And Dave, you're going to be back in person by Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be four of us.
Okay, all right.
Will you be here next Tuesday?
I will be here next week, yes. I'll be back. I won't get back, I won't return here till Friday, so I'm actually leaving tomorrow. So it's just kind of drug out. And that's really my main concern.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'll go next. Went to AMC Annual Conference now last week. But the MRC meeting on, yeah, um, was on Sunday. It started off at that. On January eighth meeting, um, they're going to be choosing the top three priorities. The top one is solid waste and then drainage, and then housing and road and bridges tied for thirds. So now they're going to decide which one's going to make that third position. There's one point three billion available for housing projects. Infrastructure would be included with this. And then they also mentioned that five point eight million is available for local housing trust funds, which is what we just recently established. And applications are accepted in early twenty twenty four, so if you want to get a hold some of that, those funds.
Those were the matching funds we, we talked about when we created that, and we've been waiting for the, uh, the application opportunity to arrive, so I guess we're waiting till January.
Early twenty twenty four.
Yep.
And then with AMC, uh, let's see. I went to the Tax Forfeited Property Work Group, and, uh, some interesting things came up on that. They want to go with, uh, this is for moving forward. I mean, I haven't really decided, you know, going backwards, you know, as far, you know, how far back do they go in the property? They want to make it at least as much, at least as far as possible. But going forward, they want to use the, what they call the judicial lien foreclosure model. Got to be a lawyer to understand what that means, but just here's some things that are included with that. Uh, redemption period would be for two years. Counties would be able to choose, uh, uh, when to foreclose and whether or not to foreclose on a property. And, you know, that they can go on for however long. Of course, there was a question on that one. What happens with the, the taxes that are due on that each year? Well, it would just keep on accumulating until either the state takes it or the county decides to foreclose. Uh, excess amounts, when there is a foreclosure, that would be paid, um, to the court to hold the money and distribute it. At foreclosure, the government, which if the county wants to buy, they would buy it at the market. And, uh, the reason for that is, uh, so that a previous, you know, previous owner who holds the taxes on it can't come back and say, well, you sold it at a lesser price. So in other words, the county would buy it at the market. Uh, the state becomes the default owner. If the county does not want the property, there would be a five percent sales fee as part of the minimum bid, and that would be equivalent to, you know, what you pay a realtor for. And then the county will issue the deed. And that, and Shar, did you get any more out of that meeting you went to it?
No, you're good.
That pretty well covered it?
Yep.
Um, then I had a parks board meeting. Couple things there. One of the main thing that came up was that the award, the one point one eight, that was originally awarded, that then it was reduced down to one point zero four, and that's due to, the maintenance shed is, remodel is not included as part of the, the award. Some things that need to be done prior to the demo would be a wet lens delineation, a historic site check, update quotes on the demo. We had a quote already for three hundred and five, but that might be a little bit more now. Uh, figuring out signage, and well, another, another one was getting security under control. As they're still having break-ins, and once we do get that maintenance shed remodeled and start putting equipment in there, we, we need to cut, not have any of this security issues going on that they have right now.
I could see even having cameras or something out there.
Cameras, yep.
Especially if it's just the maintenance shed, it wouldn't take a lot of cameras. And I thought I read, was it in the enterprise, they talked about sentenced to serve people were taking some of the stuff, removing some of the stuff from the lodge and stuff like that?
Yes, that's what it is, storage.
I like to see that. So much of that stuff, I'd hate to just see it knocked down and put in the landfill.
Yeah, yeah, there's stuff that can be saved. Of course, someone's already taken care of some of it, especially the copper wires and things like that. That's all I got.
Kay, the Mahabi meeting, um, Mahabi has been asked to be a diaper distribution center. They would get a hundred thousand diapers per year, twenty-five thousand per quarter, so they're developing that. Um, Mahabi has a car repair, and Dee has been so impressed with how they've been making it work that they doubled the grant to a hundred thousand dollars for two years. Head start enrollments are at eighty-three percent. And in so far on, in twenty twenty-three, they're at ninety-five percent. And the tiny home by Snowman that I talked about, um, they received the full funding for the grant. It will be across fifteen acres, built on ten acres, and each tiny home will be four hundred and thirty-two square feet. It's built for the homeless with a focus, it will be built for the homeless with a focus on veterans. And when Cory was talking, this is what I was talking about federally for adults. You can only stay in a homeless shelter for thirty days. And so Liz is going to reach out to the area of veteran services, but she's waiting until the zoning is approved.
You said in Snowman? Is that over by Duluth then?
Snowman is on the way to Fargo.
Oh, okay.
Down thirty-four is between Parker Rapids and DL, or Osage and DL.
Okay.
Yep. And so it's a family that just, they've served in the service, and they have a heart for veterans and the struggle that they have. And so Liz too said, a lot of people just, even a week, to kind of just get a breather and then get some direction. So this would be staffed full-time with one person, but it would be owned by Mahabi. So they talked about, um, they're going to buy the land, and so I conveyed that their land is the hottest thing on the market right now. Yeah. And then AMC, I'm just going to highlight just a couple that I went to. One was, I mean, we talked to Cory about it. It's juvenile restorative justice, and that was put on by Carlton County, and they went from four probation officers down to one. Uh, they talked about a lot of things of the entering to homeless youth, and how, uh, when they started working with the kids, I mean, just things like helping them get up in the morning, have access to go to school, a lot of the things, the crimes that were committed were out of desperation. So I'll be interested to hear what Cory says about that. The keynote speaker on cybersecurity was really interesting. The two major ways that security is broken into are people's emails and printers. I was shocked. Printer has all the information from the computer on it. And so, uh, he did a demo of what happens in the background on the black web. Really can break into anything, don't you think, Doug? Yeah. So that was really interesting. And the other thing you said, that firewalls are kind of a waste of money.
If you gave another one about, um, they can actually simulate a voice of someone that you know.
Yes, yes.
Yep. And you get a call from your grandparents, and you think it's actually them because it sounded like them asking for money.
Yeah, that's why it's important to have passwords with your kids and grandkids, to say, okay, what's the password, and then you'll. Um, I went to Sherburne County. Let's see, let me find that one. They just did a park, and, um, yeah, so it had great tribal nation. Um, it had a lot of burial grounds and connection with the tribes way back in history. And so they started out doing just a standard park, and they ended up, um, working with the tribe, and it's on four hundred and thirty-five acres, and it's going to be a walk, just a walking park with kiosks of, of different things about history. And so it was really interesting to hear them talk about how the natives and then Sherburne County came together and developed this. So I thought that was kind of timely for what we're doing at Deep Lake Park. Um, and then one of the other ones I went to was Otter, Otter Tail County did one on, um, for their employees on diversity, equity, inclusion, so I attended that one. I think, oh, I was going to go to the, um, one that Stevens County did on childcare, but I had the MCIT meeting, so I couldn't attend that, although I got their information. I ran into a commissioner from Wright County who did at-home based childcare for twelve years, who has a wealth of information. I'm going to have her connect with Mary. And she talked about how, because at MRC, we learned that the bill that's going to be proposed this next year for childcare is seven percent, the charges will be seven percent of your income, up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So people making a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will receive a subsidy from the state for childcare, and they're figuring initially it's going to cost five hundred million. When I talked to this, um, lady that did it, she said if they would redo the regulations in Minnesota, they could solve the problem. And she started giving me examples. So she did in-house care, and her kids had to have a background check, her husband had to have a background check, and then her kids that were over twelve, if they had any friends over, they had to have a background check. And she said it got so ridiculous about all the regulations and the amount of time, how her day was regulated, et cetera, that she finally went out of business. And so it'll be interesting to see if we can, through AMC, make an impact on the road that way. That's all I have.
I have one question on Mahabi. The, the new head start location, is that remodeled and up and running?
Oh, yeah, 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 the open house, I think it was in August.
August, okay. All right, uh, David, do you have any?
Yeah, I've got a few things. Um, Fair Board met and summarized their, the two thousand twenty-three fair, and they had a positive income and a good turnout. And. And then I verbally mentioned to you last time with some rough numbers on Heritage Campus totals for the first month of the fiscal year of October twenty-three. They had a net income for the first time in a long time of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars, and the EBITDA was a hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars. So a good start to the year there. HLDC continues to see slow growth in the hangar use. Mary's had positive contacts with several businesses and nonprofit entities. She's working with the city of Park Rapids and Aitney on potential small city grants applications, and you might have noticed she appeared at AMC, serving on a housing panel this last week. As far as Pinecrest update, we had some earlier delays on the start of the project due to the additional time for the state permitting process. Moderate temperatures and lack of snow have allowed the project to catch up from those delays. Final framing should be completed by the end of the year, and we're expecting the project to be ready for occupancy right around or about July first of two thousand twenty-four. And HLDC is estimating that the, that applications for tenants would be accepted maybe around April first, two thousand twenty-four, tentatively. And there will be an annual dinner that HLDC is going to put out, a taco dinner and silent auction at the Legion on January nineteenth, so mark your calendars for that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Meetings to note?
I think I covered them. TNT on Thursday, budget meeting, final meeting of the year, December nineteenth.
All right. Well, then we're ready for adjournment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we'll adjourn. Thank you.
And I think you overheard, I think I overheard you say to Shar that we don't have a personnel committee meeting?
We do not. As per Jeff.
Thanks, Dave. I will be gone from January tenth.